Oh, is James Twitchell here? He wants to be moved to the top of the agenda for the insurance. You guys okay with that? James Twitchell Insurance.
Yeah, that's fine.
He's at I, I'm gonna move him to, I'm gonna move him up to A, we're opening of Dana demolition. Is somebody here from HWC? Dan, can you come here for a second before I start, before I start the meeting?
Aaron.
Hi, how are you?
Yeah, I got it.
The true rabbit, even though it was kind of, I mean, the dedication.
Bush.
Is there any issue with this?
If you do, we'll have to reject them all and re-advertise.
It'll cost money.
Which will cost money. Um, I guess my question is, what were their complaints?
Uh, so a couple of, they said they were sent Friday, or some people said they were sent.
Yeah, we did send them out Friday, our last day for it, it was Friday.
Well, no, yeah, these were just more local, but they got sent, except for pages, and they said they were
It was a lot.
They said there was no way for them, you know, one of them said they may bid it, but they wouldn't even read it, so I just didn't know what the process was.
There is a process, we would have to, rather than open them up before you open any of them up, you'd have to say, reject them all and send them back and re-advertise, so.
I'll talk to commissioners during the meetings if you want to do, but I just wanted to.
I apologize, Ryan, I'm Dustin Whedon.
Yeah, no problem.
Dustin Whedon.
Okay, you guys ready? Call this commissioners meeting order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, roll call. Misty Hess.
Here.
RJ Donovan here. Bill Peebles.
Present.
Alright, on your agenda, we have an approval of minutes from October 7th, 2025. I entertain a motion to approve. Of the motion of Mr. Peebles, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Hess, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, approval of claims from October 10th, October 20th, October 24th, and October 31st. I entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve them.
I have a motion by Mrs. Hess, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second by Mr. Peebles, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of payroll claims from October 10th, 2025, October 24th, 2025, and November 7th, 2025. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Peebles, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Hess, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to public comment. If you'd like to speak, uh, come up to the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to address the board of commissioners. Got a crowd full of people and no one jumping to talk. Alright, seeing none, we will move on to open issues. In your packet, you'll have ordinance 2025-16, adopting certain roads into the county road system. In that, you'll see that there is roads listed as Mockingbird Drive, Oak Ridge Drive, Redwood Drive, Beechwood Drive, Ashwood Court, Popeyes Lane, Crown Hill Boulevard, Donetta Drive, Robertson Drive, Tanya Drive, Zellwood Drive, Laura Lane, and Heather Wood Lane. And I will preface this with that the County Highway Board of Directors has recommended these roads to be added into the county road system. Now, I will say, roads such as Beechwood Drive and Crown Hill Boulevard were adopted years ago into the county road system, however, uh, due to failure of completing the correct ordinance and submitting the right documentation to the state of Indiana. Uh, Indiana has not recognized those as county roads, so that is the reason they are listed for a second time in this ordinance. Um, so I entertain a motion to approve county ordinance number 2025-16, if there's support for that.
I will make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Peebles, do I have a second?
Well, since my road's on here, I abstain from that, so can I still, like, I mean, I'll second it, minus my road, I guess, I mean.
Well, if that's the case, Misty, I'll second it, that way, if you want to abstain from the whole thing, that's, we'll do that, I'll second that. Um, any further discussion?
The only, the only caveat I would have to it is that, I know, I know that the Board of Directors of the highway approved this, and that at any point in time in the future, this is brought up for discussion again, that the county, it needs to be understood that the county will not take on any expense of adopting a road. The road has to be to a certain, to a certain standard before we adopt that road.
Absolutely, and I think we defer to the, you know, the highway with that, to, you know, have their judgment, that we don't want to take over a dirt road.
But I don't know if there is already a process in place for that, a checklist or, or whatever, and maybe, maybe one needs to be developed.
Sure, absolutely, good idea. Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Staying?
Staying.
Okay, motion passes two nothing, thank you. Alright, next on the agenda, Snyder Geo Professional Service Agreement. Paige, are you here tonight? You are. Would you like to come up and talk a little bit? Shaking your head, no. Well, Jimmy's there with you, too. Come on. Well, I think just for the board, you know, we, we've talked about this, where the auditor's office and, you know, the assessor's office and multiple offices could use this, but surveyors, and it's just, I think, the cost, I don't think we can afford, but, I mean, is that
So nobody knew when we first started meeting who paid for the web GIS. All come out in the wash that E911 pays for everything that we have with WTH. That's roughly 15 grand. That includes all the editor versions, all the licensing's that are on the different computers, that includes the web map. And we met to talk about the geospatial thing with Beadham, and they quoted us a price for 12,000. Which is nice because we can build upon it, but nobody has the funds. Everybody still wants to stay with WTH.
Sure.
Even though we do not like the county's view of public GIS.
Yeah, so basically, if we wanted to switch to it, it'd be an additional 12,000 dollars. Commissioners, any other questions for Paige? Hearing that and knowing that we don't have the funding for it, I'd recommend that we just table that or shelf that agreement until, uh, time in the future comes that we would have some additional funds to move forward with that. Alright, next on the agenda, courthouse credit card request, uh, from Terry Carrera. Uh, Misty, this is for, is it Walmart, is that right?
Yeah, Walmart has canceled his credit card through Capital One, and so he just wanted to replace that, so.
Sure. Alright, commissioners, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve Terry Carrera to get a first financial credit card for the courthouse, as we've done for other department.
I'm sorry, I was reading something when you were saying what was going on with his account.
Uh, Capital One is no longer with Walmart, and so the, the Capital One card that Terry had has been canceled, and he would like to get another one.
No brainer.
Sure. I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Peebles, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Hess, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. On to new business, uh, we will move, on the agenda, we made a little change, we'll be moving county health insurance up first, so, uh, James, if you'd like to come up?
Evening.
Evening. I'll turn it over to you, James. I know, uh, the insurance committee had met this week and has been meeting periodically over our, uh, insurance. Um, and James can speak a lot more to this, but we used to be on a four-one renewal, five-one, five-one renewal, and we're looking to switch to a one-one renewal, which will help the county, and I'll let James kind of lead into that.
Yeah, so we had been asked by the committee to, uh, engage Anthem on moving the, uh, new renewal date to one-one of 2026. Away from five-one, it was basically mainly to align budgets. Anthem didn't, wouldn't release a verbal agreement on what they would offer us until around the 15th of October, uh, just based on normal procedure for one-one renewals. The original renewal came in at 10%. We had some leverage based on your past claims experience for the last 12 months, which actually has been really good. You might recall last year at five-one, I wasn't the advisor, but you guys took on about an 18 to 20% increase, I recall. Um, so 10% wasn't a bad starting point, we were able to negotiate it down to six. Our hope was to get a rate hold for the next 12 months, we weren't able to get a rate hold, but we were able to get a 6% increase. Um, I consulted with our actuary team, uh, at Epic, just to kind of get their thoughts. I thought it seemed like a good move, but I wanted to make sure that they agreed that it was, we could roll the dice and see how claims look for the next four to five months, and, you know, honestly, if they continue to run well, we could probably end up right around that 6%, maybe even closer to a rate hold, but that's no guarantee. I mean, there's no, you know, don't know what's gonna happen to the claims. Uh, the underwriters seem to indicate that there were some things going on that they were worried about over the next five months, and so if we were to cut into the current loss ratio anymore, then we could be looking at a double-digit increase come five-one. So my recommendation, uh, to the committee, uh, was to move to a one-one renewal. Um, and I think the last thing, last two things that I'll add, there's still some discussion going on about, um, some potential plan design changes. Do we want to, um, try to get that 6% increase down by making changes to the PPO deductible and the HSA deductible? Do we want to, uh, the county's cost share is right now 92, pays 92% of the premium. Um, employees, uh, and actually throughout, uh, every tier play, pay 8%. That's pretty, um, pretty rich as far as municipalities and the state of Indiana are concerned. Uh, so we had talked about maybe 91.9 or a 90.10 spread on that 6%, um, but we haven't really, I think, reached an agreement yet, um, so I, I think that's where we're at, if there's any questions you have, but I have recommended the one-one with a 6% increase.
So commissioners, what we need tonight will be some approval, uh, to go with Epic's recommendation of a one-one renewal with a, uh, 6% increase, and then the authority to, uh, let the committee, uh, it's a committee of five, uh, I serve on it, the auditor serves on it, uh, council, was council president, James, but Brendan Ferri serves on that committee, Paige Kilbore does. Um, with a one-one renewal, we will have open enrollment very quickly approaching here in December, so those plan changes will have to be negotiated here rather quickly. Um, so we would need to approve the one-one and the 6% increase, and then delegate to the committee to be able to make that decision, um, with the blessing of the commissioners going forward here in the next 30 days, if not sooner.
So on the, so that, on the, what's the average cost? So what would that be, like 6%?
So the spread, uh, between, on both plans, varies just a little bit, but not much. It is a technical increase on the PPO plan of 5.99, or I'm sorry, 6.02, on the HSA plan, it's 5.99. Um, and again, we've looked at various plan options to get it down to, uh, 2% or get it down to around, the HSA plan would take on like a 4% decrease, and the PPO plan would take on a 4% increase. We've even discussed an option of adding a third plan, uh, to where we didn't increase the deductible on either plan. Employees could, uh, migrate over to the third HSA plan that we, or this third overall plan, second HSA plan that we added, um, if they didn't want to take on any of that increase, if it's decided upon, you know, passing along the increase. So there's just some decisions that, you know, I think still need to be made, uh, we have had quite a bit of back and forth. But the 6% and the one-one, right now, in the health insurance market in Indiana, uh, I don't know that I have a one-one renewal right now that's running at a much better rate than that, like, it's pretty good, it's pretty bad out there.
What do we have a committee for this for, if they're bringing this to us, without the committee, without the committee agreeing to it?
So, so the committee has agreed to the one-one and the 6%, which is what's, we're asking for approval from the board of commissioners tonight.
The committee agreed to that.
The committee, the committee agreed to that.
I'm hearing the salesman standing there.
Well, where the committee, yeah, where the, where the, where the committee hasn't come to an agreement yet is on the plan changes on the 91.9, the 90.10, or the high deductible third plan, or higher deductible same rate. That's where it's still being negotiated out, because the, the committee's pretty split on that.
And there's just been a limited amount of time for them to honestly, um, take in all the information, just because, I mean, we just got the actual decision from the committee to go ahead and have Anthem generate the renewal about a week and a half ago, and so it took us, you know, a couple days to get those cost shares in front of people. I mean, the, the information has got, gotten out as quickly as we could possibly get it. It's just they really haven't had a whole lot of time to make, um, a decision in the best interest of, of all the employees.
See, tonight, we just, we need to act on the one-one renewal and the 6% increase, if there's a, a motion to approve that.
So we have to approve this in order for you to do the other negotiations, that's what I'm hearing?
If you didn't approve this, we would wait until five-one and see how it goes. If you do approve this, then I think what we're hoping for is that the committee can get the, um, proper authority to be able to decide between that committee of, I don't know, what's, five people, of what they think is, is the best as far as how to handle the 6%. Do we do a plan change? Do we change our contribution structure? Simple as that.
And if that's the committee's recommendation, and that's what we need, I would make a motion to move forward with the one-one renewal and the 6%.
Alright, I have a motion by Mrs. Hess, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Peebles, do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, James, thank you, and then, uh, like I said, hopefully our committee will get something set up next week, then.
Yep, will do.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay, that's taken care of. Alright, um, next, we've got opening bids for Dana demolition, and Dustin, this is you're supposed to open, is that correct? Nah, Jimmy's got time, he ain't got nothing to do. Yeah, I, I spoke to Bill a little bit before the meeting, before I hand them to you, we've got several here. As one commissioner, I did receive some complaints from contractors, um, that stated, you know, um, the addendums were, I don't want to say confusing, like I mentioned to you, Dustin, but they'd said they'd received several, uh, the most recent was last Friday. You know, and there was something about, uh, was it asbestos, is that correct?
Correct, there was, um, some asbestos in all three of them.
You want to come up, yeah, you want to come to the podium, no, sorry.
Uh, so yes, there was, there's three, it's all three buildings, 100, 104, and 116 North Maple Street. There is asbestos in three of the buildings. Um, in further investigation and discussion with contractors, it was determined that the 104 and the 116 North Maple Street buildings, asbestos can actually be torn, be left in the building during demolition activities, but the 100 North Maple Street, the asbestos has got a little, um, unclear, I guess we'd call it, of, of how it needs to be addressed. There's a lot of buildings falling down. How do you tear down a building? How do you abate asbestos in a building that is collapsing at the same time, when you have to follow procedure and safety precautions, et cetera? Um, so then that's when we actually split the buildings apart, if you will, and that's where the addendum would.
Was that the, was that Friday when that was done?
That was Friday, I believe.
Okay.
Yep.
So ju- just to share with the commissioners, that's the concern from a couple of local contractors, that they, they felt like they didn't have time to review that. I don't know how big those addendums were.
So the, the asbestos information has been in there since the very beginning, it's just how we split it up, so I would believe that a contractor could have had all, all the information at hand, maybe not in quite the way we wanted to see it today, um, but they had all the information that they needed, and it was just kind of split up in a later day.
Sure. I'm gonna defer back to a question I asked about the insurance. Shouldn't this have gone to redevelopment, being since they, they currently own the building?
So redevelopment is the owner and the administrator of the project, I'd call it, uh, but Vermillion County, the commissioners are the applicant to OBR, so in order to meet OBR's requirements, they ask that we, uh, they, that the applicant opens the actual bids themselves. You guys don't necessarily have to be involved throughout the entire process, if you don't want to be, and once it's construction starts, but the actual opening and recommendations will come back to you guys, since you guys are the applicant.
Good enough.
Sure. Alright, well, commissioners, would you like to have Dustin, uh, open these this evening? Or I did ask Dustin, since there was a couple contractors, and I told him I would ask this question, um, about possibly extending the opportunity to bid. Um, Dustin did say if you didn't do that, you would have to reject these, because you don't want to open them and be unfair to any contractors. Is that a possibility? And Dustin, it said there would be a cost to that, because you would have to re-advertise.
We'd have to re, reject all bids, and send them all back to the contractor, it's not a huge deal. Uh, we'd have to restart the advertisement process, new publications in the paper, uh, there would be costs associated with that, there'd be costs associated with our time, uh, it's after, it's not a ton of time, but there's some time that we'd have to do to reissue everything. It's definitely a possibility, but it's, I, I don't, we've got several bids, I've got plenty of interest, I don't know if that's required to do that, but again, it's your guys' decision, if you want to reject and re-advertise.
Yeah, so we'll head up to the board, I mean, like I said, I do know there was two local contractors that reached out to me that indicated they would bid if they had more time, um, but again, that's, I mean, we have, like Dustin said, I mean, I don't know how many is here, at least three or four, I would imagine, so, um, we can open them, we get extended, it's up to you guys.
The, uh, the building on the south end of that street is getting very dangerous. I don't think we should table this any longer than we need to, just for public safety reasons.
Sure, yeah, that's fine, if you guys want to open them, sure. Dustin, you don't have a problem opening these then?
Nope, yeah, I'm happy. Um, just so everybody's aware, we do have two divisions, it's broken up into a and a B. Um, the B is the 100 North Maple, and the A is 104 and 116 together, so everybody's aware as I read them. So the first packet I've got here is from Maguire Excavating and Trucking for Division B. Their bid for Division B is $47,710.04, 47, 710, 00. The next bid I have here, now that I say that, I should probably open all the Bs at the same time. How do you guys like that?
That's what you can do, however, yeah.
Well, just, I'll just read them in the order since they're stacked here, the Division A bid for Maguire Excavating and Trucking. The bid, and the, for Division A is in the amount of $47,710.04, 47, 710, and 0 cents. And I will note that, uh, it is clear that they're separate divisions, even though they're the same number. The next bid I have is from Izelle Excavating, and it looks like they may have bundled both A and B together. The bid for Izelle Excavating, Excavating for Division A is $100,000.01, 1, 0, 0, 0, 0, and 0 cents. Izelle Excavating's bid for Division B is in the amount of $45,700.04, 45, 700, and 0 cents. The next bid is from McCullough Excavating and Silt Removal, looks like they bundled A and B together in the packet. The bid for McCullough Excavating for Division A is in the amount of $104,000, $104,205.04, 1, 0, 4, 2, 0, 5, and 0 cents. Their bid for Division B is in the amount of $52,400.04, 5, 2, 4, 0, 0, and 0 cents. Uh, the next bid is from, I'll open it up and find out here. This bid is from S&amp;G Excavating, for Division A is $99,000.04, 9, 9, 0, 0, 0, and 0 cents. And it looks like they're. Uh, the bid for S&amp;G Division B. S&amp;G's bid for Division B is $40,000.04, 4, 0, 0, 0, and 0 cents. The next bid is from Renescent Emolition. Apologize. They're making it super tough today. Renesence's bid for Division A is in the amount of $96,000.04, 9, 6, 0, 0, 0, and 0 cents. I wonder if B's in there, too. Sorry, I didn't want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Division B for Renesence is in the amount of $76,000.04, 7, 6, 0, 0, 0, and 0 cents. The next bid is from Doran Associates. The bid from Division A for Doran Associates is $38,700.04, 3, 8, 7, 0, 0, and 0 cents. Renes, I said Renescent, didn't I? I meant to say Doran Associates, if I misspoke, I apologize.
You said Dor.
Okay. Doran Associates for Division B bid is in the amount of $38,700.04, 3, 8, 7, 0, 0, and 0 cents. And I believe those are the same number, but I will note that they are for different divisions, so we'll check that. That is all of the bids that we have received. We'll take those under review, um, at our office, make sure they have all the required documentations. I will note that in our requirements, um, they, we will award Division A and B together, even though we read them separate, there will only be one contractor on site, due to the nature of the buildings.
Dustin, I did have one question for you on that. Um, I know some of these buildings, like I know, uh, I don't know if you helped on the Kyuga teardown demo of the old Masonic Lodge, there was a requirement that those, uh, landfill tickets be turned in, due to the nature of some of this, will that be required?
Yes, we'll require landfill tickets. Yes, we'll require landfill tickets so that we know where it's going. We don't want material that is unfit for disposal in a farm field or something like that going.
Yeah, that's true.
Going someplace like that. If it needs to go to the landfill, we're going to make sure it goes to the landfill. If some materials in there, some of the clean concrete can go to some clean field sites at private properties, but that'd be very limited on a project like this. So we'll keep track of all that.
Sure. So you'll review these and get these to the redevelopment?
Yep, and we'll make a recommendation after we've had a chance to review to you guys and the redevelopment, so you guys are both aware of everything.
So there were two bids in there?
Yep.
That were really, really low. So was that, and that was for the two buildings, is that correct?
So.
Three buildings.
Division A is for two buildings.
That's what I thought.
The two north buildings and Division B is for the south building.
Yeah. So then one was for forty-seven, seven, ten, but the rest, and one was for thirty-eight, seven, and the rest of them were like close to a hundred thousand. So could those be wrong?
They could be. We'll, as part of our review, we'll make sure they have all the documents. And once we are sure that they have all the required documentation, we'll actually call the low bidder, make sure that, because this is public information, that, hey, we read your bid, it seemed like it may be a little low, are you sure you have everything? And they get, they have up to forty-eight or seventy-two hours to withdraw their bid if they feel like they have missed something major in nature. So say they forgot asbestos or something like that. They're allowed to withdraw their bid at no penalty to them.
Sure.
And then we would move up the list of the next low bidder.
Alright. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you for your guys' time. Thanks for the patience.
Alrighty, moving on. Let's see. Vacating Alley, Douglas Blue. We just asked you to come up, give us a brief overview of it, that you wanted to vacate an alley?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Would be on the south side of my property, joining property to a... Abandoned forever property.
Got it.
It's under American Landhold Incorporated. What did I, but taking care of it for forty-three years, has I lived there?
Sure.
And I'm wanting to put up a pole barn and it's going to extend over my existing line. And would like to get it closed so I can carry on.
So I have it on the overhead over there now.
Oh, right up here. From what I see on here, it's the alley runs east and west, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yellow blocks there. Mine catches up in a minute. This house is right here. That's the alley he's wanting to vacate. He's vacating, he'll get half of it.
Okay.
I've got receipts where I've sent him the register letter. Put it in the paper.
Sure. So no one utilizes this alley?
No.
As I said.
Like, I've lived there for forty-three years and just got a tree and a bigger round than nice.
Yeah, I was, I mean, just looking at it, it looks like nobody, I mean.
Yeah.
Nobody utilizes it. And you're going to put a pole barn up, you said, right on?
Yeah, and this is, it's a graved up farm pasture on the opposite side of it, so.
But you're only vacating your section of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Blue? No? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the vacating of alley presented to us tonight.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion, Mr. Peebles. Do I have a second? I have a second, Mr. Test. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Good luck on your new pole barn.
Thank you, sir.
Assessor's here, make sure, make sure you tell her what you're putting up. She's in the back, back there. Well, building permit first, then.
Don't forget eight-one-one.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of the assessor, you're next up on the agenda.
We put out for bids for our cyclical reassessment work back in August, no, September. And I received three inquiries and I've gotten two bids. We opened them in the office. And I have emailed you each a copy of the company that I auditioned for.
Commissioners, any questions for Paige? Is there a reason this company over the other company? Have they done work in the county before or?
My big reasoning was the difference in the expense. So it is going with a different company than what we've had in previous years, but it's at a savings of roughly eighty-four thousand dollars. So Michael and I were going to pick up the residential and the ag exempt properties in-house. So with the utilities that we have, or excuse me, the industrial properties that we have in the county, I still need help. A lot of that is complicated.
And changing.
And changing, yes.
So with this nexus group, you're, by going with them, you're saving the county eighty-four thousand dollars?
Yes.
Awesome. There's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract presented to us tonight by the assessor.
Paige, does everything that you want to do with the eighty-four thousand dollar savings?
Yes.
Like you compared both, I'm assuming?
They're identical.
Yeah.
They're identical. One of the bright sides to changing companies is that I'm going to have three attorneys at my beck and call for any of the industrial and commercial appeals that we have. I don't know if anybody watched our appeals this last session, but we had one particular one in the south where the burden of proof shifted to me because the state updated the cost tables. And we didn't have the resources at the time to back that up as far as sales go, so they got to skirt us back to the five percent rule. So I just think by having the attorneys on me.
Sure.
He wants help.
Absolutely.
I do have the original copy here.
Is that the one you want to sign?
Yes, please.
If approved?
Well, I hope it's approved. Yeah. And I'd also sent a copy to John and I hadn't heard whether it is a standard state contract.
Sure. Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, Mr. Test. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Peebles. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Paige. Alright, next on the agenda, nine-one-one, EMA Director Jimmy Miller Jr.
I sent a letter a couple days ago to the council, the commissioners, referencing the Vermont County tornado sirens. I can give a brief little history on the tornado sirens if you guys would like.
Sure.
So, make a, make a long story short, they weren't actually all intended to be tornado sirens, actually VX sirens from the Army ammunition plant. When they left and demilitarized and they got rid of VX, they actually gave them to the county. So they didn't cost the county anything initially. We have, we have put some money into them over the years. Again, I don't know the exact dollar amount because the former EMA Director did a lot of the maintenance himself. As of this morning, though, so every day they do a self-test. I have a console down by EOC and there's another one in the Vermont County Sheriff's Department where they can be activated from, but the reports come with the EOC. As of this morning, we have four that are non-operational and that was before Mark had retired. We went around, tried to fix some things and ECS came out and also tried to fix some things sparingly. Because the contract we have with them is very sparing. So we have four currently non-working in the county. These tornado sirens, when we inherited, they were ten plus years old, as well as the equipment and the solar panels for them. Making them in excess of twenty plus years old now, by the time we've inherited them. They're outside for three hundred and sixty-five days, hot, cold, rain, snow, doesn't really matter, they're out there. I have, I have a resolution, there's one on the east end of Newport, where actually, I've actually worked with the county Newport, where they're going to allow us to hook it up with our auxiliary power because it's in constant shade over there. So a solar panel won't work there. But the radio systems within the tornado sirens, the solar panels, even some of the batteries that I've been able to replace, I'm actually out of batteries now. The, they're failing. Everything in them is starting to fail. So, been working with ECS, I, in that letter, I put a very rough quote together off of past invoices and stuff like that. I might actually reach out to ECS. It could be more expensive, it could be less expensive. I don't really know the exact number yet, but just going off of past invoices, the rough number would be around three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to have everything gone through. We have twenty-seven sirens currently and the furthest north siren I have is in the town of Perry, as well. So that leaves Gessie, Riley'sburg, sixty-three and seventy-four, that high, that high travel area without the coverage of tornado sirens. As well as there's, there's a trailer park in the north end of the county as well that's currently not under the coverage of the tornado siren. So to have a new siren put up, which Vermont County Emergency Management does have a spare siren at the pole barn in Kyuga. So it'd be less expensive to have one put up, but to purchase two more, in my opinion, the, the north end of the county needs more tornado siren coverage. And talking with other counties, ones that don't have them, their ideology behind this is that there's no liability if you don't have it. So there are options, but I'm, in my recommendation, we currently have them, we, we should continue to employ and use those. And then also, I would like to also get permission to talk to ECS about a legitimate maintenance contract from ECS to have them maintenance a couple times a year.
There's most of these, Jimmy, are what, twenty years old?
Twenty plus, yeah. And, and, and former Director O'Haire's defense, he, with working with the money he had, he would try to scrape money together at the end of the year and purchase a solar panel to replace one. But he, in the time of doing that, two more may have failed. So he, with working with the money he had and trying to do most of the work himself, it was kind of a never-ending loop, so. But I would like to try to do it and to be completely honest, it will probably honestly be cheaper to do it and one fell swoop instead of just doing it incrementally over time.
Sure. Commissioners, any questions for Director Miller or?
At the, the estimated cost of the project, that's a, definitely a project that needs to be bid out and we can't just take one company's word for that price.
Okay.
Am I wrong in saying that?
No, no, anything over a public works project, I believe it's a hundred and fifty thousand, but which you may run into, we still have to advertise, you may only have one company, you know, put in a bid because...
Is that going to be an issue that I already have a contract with them for maintenance?
I don't think maintenance, as long as it doesn't exceed a hundred and fifty thousand, I don't think the maintenance contract, but I think like we're, Bill's saying, the total cost of three fifteen, you'll have to create.
That's, that's rough. This is going on.
Yeah, we're just saying like, you know, we purchased an ambulance over two hundred thousand and we should have said, hey, does anybody want to like, you know, sell us an ambulance instead of just going and running? No, I, I think, yeah, I would definitely say you definitely need to solicit that, but you're going to have to put it out for bid to say, hey, we're looking to replace twenty, twenty solar panels.
And going off of the, what I sent an email and the replies was to get on the commissioners and the council's agenda, do I need to stay on the council's agenda? In your opinion, or do I need to do a bit of process?
I, I would say that the council, they're, they're kind of, you know, the holders of the purse here, so I think I would stay on the agenda, would be my opinion, and see if they're going to, you know, approve any type of funding and then you can go out for, you know, bid that way. I mean, the bids are always contingent on funding anyway, but it would be nice to know if the council's in favor of, you know, say it's three hundred thousand or say they're saying, hey, we'll give you a hundred and fifty, you know, replace a few of them for a hundred and fifty. I mean, commissioners, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I mean, after reading, I mean, I read the email, I read the council's responses. I think that it's important that, you know, we, I think everyone was in agreement, this impacts people's lives. So it's important for us to move forward, so.
I would say stay on the agenda, but definitely just look at, I mean, I guess in theory, your batteries, I guess you could purchase, I mean, that wouldn't have to be bid out, that's under ten thousand, but if you're doing it as one project at three fifteen, you're going to have to because it's over one, it's over one fifty. So. Anything else, commissioners? No? Well, Jimmy, I was going to, one last thing, I spoke to you briefly, there was an old truck up there in the shop you had mentioned. Do you have any use for that?
I do not know.
Okay, do you want to elaborate on what that is? Because I don't actually know the, the truck per se, is it an old army truck?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a demilitarized army truck from, I believe, the seventies. The truck does run. I wasn't able to get it started, but it does run. And I was waiting, it's basically, it's a utility truck, it's set up with a generator and hookups for welders and stuff like that to be put in it and settling tanks. The county highway kind of showed some interest, said I was going to give them some time to go over it so we could just do a transfer if they wanted it, they're more than welcome to have it. If not, I would like to get permission to post on GovDeals and see what kind of money we'd be able to get out of it so I could use some of that money for emergency management to try to get some, some other stuff.
I, I don't have any objection to that.
And sat there for at least a couple of years. We didn't pay anything for it. It came from the United States government, so.
Yeah, I would, I would defer to your judgment, I guess if the highway department wants it and you want to transfer it, and if they don't, you know, I don't know how you get a quote on that because on the GovDeals, you, you don't want to list it for a hundred bucks, you want to maybe.
Right.
Start at a bare minimum. I don't know what that truck would be worth. Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of that, letting him have the discretion to do that.
I'm in favor of just my, I don't know why we need to keep another piece of junk around if that's what it is. I mean, we've already entered, or in the process of entering in a long-term deal with the enterprise and, you know, we're trying to get rid of the stuff we're spending all of our money on in the county to keep it on the road, so.
Sure.
I say GovDeals, that's my.
We'll defer to you, Jimmy, on that, so. And I think you've got an account with GovDeals, right?
Correct.
Okay, yep. Sounds good.
Okay.
You both did good work, thank you. Alright, next on the agenda, Bill Harman, BTA.
Well, thank you, commissioners, for having me this evening, putting me on the agenda. Bill Hartman with the Vermont Trail Alliance. I just wanted to come forward this evening and just give you a brief summary of where at and some of our projects. We currently have our project plan on the B and O trail and that's the one, Monazuma to Hillsdale. And our project is from Hillsdale South to Alta to New Trailhead there. And we do have our project plan now submitted by Roger Azar through Apex to the DNR. And we're waiting on a reply so that we can proceed with that project. The other part of that is, is that project basically has to be completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-six to comply with our grant application and such. We had, we got an extension on that. We're good through December two thousand and twenty-six. And as you know, that whole project, so anytime you're in the creek or the flood plain, which that whole corridor along there is considered in the flood plain, you know, we have to go through DNR for approval and permission to proceed. So that's on, on that particular project and corridor, right? Any additional questions there? I'd be happy to address them.
Put your status on your bridge over the creek.
Well, so we, we have the bridge design. It's going to be a two-part structure. We, we determined that we could not get a hundred and twenty-five foot stretch beam structure in there, so our bridge engineer, which is Michael Ammons with... Help me here.
B-three bridge.
Pardon?
B-three bridge.
B-three bridge. And I think he's worked for.
That's who you all use for county.
Yeah, so he designed and designed the two structure and then we, we've had another engineer, you know, look at it. And so our, our biggest thing right now is getting the approvals through DNR to prove, so we've submitted that plan for the two-part bridge, the, the structures on each end, substructures and the piling and such as that within the flood plain. So that's, you know, we're, we're waiting for the blessing of DNR right now to proceed with placing that bridge structure in that location. And then proceeding on south to the New Trailhead part. Okay, any question? Any other questions, Bill?
Last, you did a good job narrating the video of the bridge, the trail to somewhere. I did, I did watch it in its entirety.
And, yeah, we thank you for that. We've tried to... And, yeah, we thank you for that, uh, we've tried to, uh, be more proactive in our social media with, uh, promoting our trails within the, uh, uh, county. Uh, we did also have a, a video out there, Tom Dunn one, Tom Milligan done one just prior to our, uh, uh, Over the River Through the Woods event. And we was able to post that so people could actually see the trail online. Uh, we had our, uh, North Vermillion, uh, cross-country, Girls Cross Country team that has used the, the trail there in Newport. And they created a video and it's out there, and so, you know, we, we've taken steps to try to promote these things within our county. So, uh, uh, the next one to make you aware of is, uh, you know, uh, well, basically, the, the new, at Newport, uh, the Newport Trail has a Hillsdale address, but it is just south of Newport. Uh, currently, it's just Trailhead Park, but we, uh, have come up with the name of OPD Trailhead Park. And how we come up with that, it's the OPD Trail, but that's based upon historical, uh, Oliver P. Davis. He's buried in the Rise Cemetery, uh, he's had one of the largest markers there, he was a former state representative and senator in the state of Indiana. Uh, farmer back in the day, he had a ferry on the wall by Shriver, uh, there's just a lot of, uh, historical relevance to, uh, naming it. So with that and with your blessings, if you have no objections to that, we'd like to proceed with the OPD name and then contact, uh, IDOT to get permission to have signage out on sixty-three, uh, to show and promote Trailhead Park and our trail. Uh, also, uh, we're, uh, we plan on, if, if ever, if we have your blessings with that as well. Uh, we also, uh, would like to, uh, create and, uh, put a historical marker on the back of the park sign there, just kinda giving it, everybody some historical information on the historical relevance of the name, uh, why it's named that. Uh, but we think, uh, it's a, a, a very good, you know, it's a sound name and with the historical significance and such. Uh, so it gives us an opportunity to come up with a name other than just Trailhead Park, we can put it out on sixty-three, have directional signs, uh, and so forth. Uh, along with that, I wanna let you know, we're, uh, proceeding with our, uh, uh, project on the two acre, additional two acre parcel that you allowed, uh, VTA, uh, uh, and the county, we set aside county property for that, and we've had it sprayed, uh, the next, uh, part of that project. And we visited with the gentleman tonight, uh, there, uh, with, uh, we're gonna have burn down, burn it, and then till it. And that's just part of the proceeding project, uh, with promoting and, uh, continuing on with the pollinator priority restoration of that two acre plot. Uh, so it's been sprayed, it's been fenced off, uh, so that pretty much, I think, covers everything, oh, no, I forgot one thing, my apologies. I just, uh, did get a, uh, a text, and if you'd like to see it, I can pull it up on my phone. But one of our members come up with mileage signage markers on the B and O there, Hillsdale, the same as we have on the OPD. And so we have some mi- mileage markers, uh, that, that are now, have now been placed. And, I'm sorry, that's on, uh, text. So we have, if you wanna pass that around, Bill, you can each look at it, but it, just very quickly, it gives you an idea of the mileage markers we placed on there for the, uh, B and O trail, which is nice because going into the future, we're gonna, as we expand our trail, uh, plan, we're going to, uh, continue to place those, and so it just gives us an additional safety factor. If any individuals out there and would be injured, and they call into the nine-one-one process, or the nine-one-one, which I think Jimmy's, uh, program. Uh, then we have a mileage marker so that nine-one-one knows where to go to to assist those individuals, so it's a safety factor. So, uh, other than that, that's my presentation and update for the evening, unless you have any additional questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, you had asked us for our support, so you don't need to vote or anything on the signage.
On the signage, you requested to, it's to change the name of the park, right?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner, is there any objections to changing that to?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
No objection, so by agreement, we are, we support that.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the historical marker, same deal, any objections to the historical marker on the backside of the, no, by agreement, we support that as well.
And I think it's just, uh, an actual thing we can get with IDOT, and I think applying, and they will assist us with getting the proper signage up there to recognize that. And anytime you can get additional record, uh, recognition out, you know, highway, uh, directional signage, it's a good thing.
Les, did you have something?
I had just, when you were talking about nine-one-one, it occurred to me that with this new bridge that we're gonna build across Little Raccoon Creek, we've asked for them to design that to support a truck, ambulance, whatever they need to use to get across that. So it's gonna be beefy enough, and it's gonna be just ten foot wide, so you can be able to pass it either with a truck.
Sure.
Empty.
Thank you.
For an emergency vehicle.
Perfect.
And I, and I would like to say, uh, a special thanks to not only the VTA, but, uh, Ellis Farms with this, uh, pollinator area that's two acres. I know you guys worked very hard together to, um, come up with a compromise on that, I think we, the county and the citizens-
Thank you for getting it put there too.
I, I think the county wins out on that, you know, we, we get a little bit of pollinator here, and then the farm lease still works out for the county as well, so I'd just like to commend both groups on coming to a resolution and working together on that, so thank you.
Well, and the great thing about that is, I'll just throw it out there, as that's developed, we're going to attach that to our main trail. So for those individuals that may not be able to walk a two-mile trail, we're gonna put a trail through that, uh, which will also provide our fire breaks. But it'll, you know, it'll give our opportunity for our schools and our students to come up and learn about nature. Uh, it'll give some of our older individuals that may can't, uh, walk that two miles, it gives them another alternative to a smaller opportunity to still get out and enjoy nature in its best form and glory.
Sure.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, uh, Veterans Office, Aine. Are you gonna ask us to read this proclamation?
It is whatever you want to do.
I was looking at it, and I was like, this looks a little long.
Yeah, as I was typing it too. But I can post it on the Facebook page and-
Uh, I mean, it's, we wrote, didn't we read a proclamation for, uh, the domestic?
Mm-hmm, we did.
We probably should read this one too, would be my, whether any commissioner wished to, well, first, do you have a presentation before we read the proclamation?
Well, I just have other stuff I wanted to cover.
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, I don't know how you guys wanted to do that.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, um, I just wanted, you know, to put this out there that I, I currently have a hundred and three active sites. And so I just need to stress the importance, uh, and emphasize of how important it is to schedule an appointment because, um, I am the only one, um, and I don't have any other support staff, so I wanna make sure that the time I am providing to these veterans is good quality time, but I also need to make sure I spend good quality time, you know, preparing, you know, their claims. I have some claims that have taken me upwards of three months to complete, um, and as I get into, thank you. Um, as I, and then like, my caseload of first-time Vietnam filer vets is where a lot of my bulk is, and that entails, um, I have one veteran who has thirty different claims for Agent Orange exposure. So, um, and I have hundreds and hundreds of pages of, you know, medical files, but also, uh, service treatment records that I have to be able to sit there for hours and hours and go through all of these pages by pages, so um, I will not turn a vet, veteran away that walks, you know, through that door, cause when I got out, I was turned away at that door. Um, and being as young as I was, I didn't know that there was other avenues I could go when I was turned away, so that is one thing I will, but I will not ever turn a veteran away, I don't care where I live from, um, even out of county and out of state. Um, but also, I wanted to talk about, um, the importance, um, Senate Bill One is a state bill, and that is in regards to, um, property taxes. And so they, there is a chance that they could possibly phase out the homestead tax credit. None, none of this is written in stone yet, but the one thing I need to emphasize is the veterans, they have three different tiers. And so if they are rated ten to thirty percent, it is a fourteen thousand dollar property tax deduction. If they are tier two, it is forty to seventy percent if they are rated, and it is twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And if they are tier three, which is eighty percent or more, it is an additional ten thousand dollars on top of the twenty-four, nine, sixty. That veterans' stuff was not touched. So if you are a veteran and you were told you didn't qualify, um, I, I don't care, come into the office. You know, call me, schedule an appointment, because we need to be proactive as much as we can instead of reactive, because this is going to hurt a lot of our elderly people in our community. Um, so I just wanted, you know, get that out there. Um, also, Senate Bill forty, four thirty-three is, um, another state bill that is raising the standards for, uh, CBSOs throughout Indiana. And so that is more training for us and, um, just, it's raising the standard of care that veterans receive across the state of Indiana. Um, so we are gonna be getting more concert, comprehensive, comprehensive education, training, and then we, um, have to do community outreach also and to better serve the veteran population. So, uh, us being more rural than like Marion County, Brownsburg and such, um, that is more hours out there on the road to make sure that these veterans feel like they are still part of our community. Um, and that is one of the things I have really been trying to emphasize. Um, and with that, um, the VA, they provide a GDX and, um, their, the fiscal year is, um, let me find, get my notes here, uh, July, so the two thousand and twenty-four was July, July first of twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty-five. Um, I had, I currently have eight hundred and ninety-one veterans in Vermillion County, and that is about roughly forty percent that we know about, so there's another probably sixty percent roughly that we don't know about and do not obtain any veteran benefits. For the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-four, Vermillion County took on thirty-four new veterans. Twenty-five of those veterans was from February until June of this year. Um, so far this first quarter of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, uh, Vermillion County, we have taken on twenty-seven new veterans. Um, so that is why I cannot stress enough, uh, please schedule an appointment. Um, and I was gone, um, two days to the battle line to home summit, and there I learned so much new information that, um, I, we currently have lost six Vietnam veterans so far this year. And so with that, some of those men did not have, um, a service connected rating. Well, I've had three of those widows come to me, they're on the verge of losing their homes. So one of the things I was able to find out is if a veteran passed away and they did not have a service connected rating when they passed away, if on that death certificate it says, um, like a stroke and they have Agent Orange exposure, um, that they could qualify for a DIC claim, which will give them, you know, a possible fifteen to sixteen hundred dollar income every month from being a dependent and losing their loved one. Um, and with that, um, I, we are starting a support group, um, I have a meeting next week with a couple of the widows, and it'll be at a church in Clinton, and I'm just gonna kinda let those ladies head it up. Um, they're all in various stages of, uh, grieving at this moment, but the one thing they all wanted was a support group, so we are getting that going, and we will have our first meeting before Thanksgiving. Um, and I will post all of this, um, on Facebook to let everybody know, but it's not also for widows, it's also for those caretakers and that are taking care of the veterans at home right now. And other than that, that is the gist of it, and I'll post all of this information on Facebook also, on the BSO site.
I think for the update, um, as always, uh, you impress us every time you come to a meeting, I think it was something new, and I just couldn't express my gratitude for all the hard work, uh, you do for the veterans of this county, I mean, it's just phenomenal what you do, so I just wanna say thanks for that. Um, commissioners, any other comments before one of us read this, uh, proclamation?
No, I would just say, you're doing a great job, I think every time you come, you bring a new, you have something, so you're, I, I love the fact that you go, you do, and you serve the community, so, great job, thank you.
All right, this proclamation, would any commissioner like to read that?
I'll just kind of scratch it.
All right, Misty, would you like? All right, well, Aine prepared a, uh, Operation Green Light for Veterans two thousand and twenty-five proclamation, and, uh, I guess I will read that, since my other commissioners aren't feeling up to reading that tonight. Uh, whereas the residents of Vermillion County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifice of those who have served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Vermillion County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community and the American Legion, veterans of foreign, foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military members transitioning from military service are at a high risk of suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Vermillion County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition, recognition should be granted. Now therefore be resolved with designation as a green light for veterans, for veterans, county, Vermillion County hereby declares November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five is a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of those transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved, then op, observation of Operation Green Light, Vermillion County will have the courthouse lit up with green. And be it further resolved, Vermillion County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November fourth to eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Aine, thank you for preparing that. Thank you. I was reading, I was like, I said, I'm just gonna read it, I'm just gonna read past it. I guess I should have proofread it, made a little like mark on it before I got there, but. All right, moving on, uh, Sparklight upgrading products, uh, in your packet, uh, Sparklight had sent us, uh, an email stating that we are eligible for some, uh, other services, um, EAS had looked at this and said this is something we should do, it's no, no cost to the county, but it does need a signature from the commissioners. Um, so if there's no objection to that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the upgrading of services from, uh, Sparklight Business.
There's no additional explanation.
Nope.
I make the motion.
I have a motion on Mr. Peebles, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second on Ms. Sess, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. And then last couple of things we added to the agenda real quickly. Our next Commissioners' meeting falls during the Indiana Association of County Commissioners Conference, which will be on Tuesday. With the Commissioners attending that, I'd like to recommend pushing the meeting to December 8th, 6:00 PM, if there's no objections from either Commissioner.
No objections, yeah.
Misty, if you could amend our meeting schedule to move from December 2nd?
Is that right?
You put it out on Monday?
No, I lied the 9th, I lied, 2nd to the 9th. Is that still good, Bill?
The night?
Yeah, on Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, yeah, December 9th at 6:00 PM. And then we also will need to advertise a special meeting for Monday, December 1st at 8:30. And the only item on that agenda will be to open bids received from the Highway Department.
That's 8:30, 8:00 AM, correct?
Yep, no, I'm not, we're not going to have an 8:30 evening meeting.
Just making sure.
All right, and then the only last thing that I had on here, when we were talking to Jimmy about the old truck up there, there is an old Jeep that the Commissioners have possession of. It was a former Sheriff Phelps and Sheriff Hope Camp, it was an investigator Jeep. They transferred it to the surveyor, Ron Mack, he drove it for a year, six months. It has not been in operation now for probably close to a year, it's been parked, we're paying insurance on it. I'd recommend that we list that on Gov. Deals and get rid of it and get it off the insurance. Just like permission from the Commissioners to have the Highway Department do that, or somebody list that for us. Any problem? Okay, all right, that's all I have on my notes, is there anything else from the other Commissioners tonight? No, Bill? Nothing? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion, Miss Sess, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned, thank you.